Three News Now Web Extra.
And we will start with Lauren Myers. You have a minute for opening comments.
Hey, everyone. Okay, just want to make sure you heard me. But as stated, I'm Lauren Myers and I'm running for CB School Board. And just a little bit about me is that I'm a third generation Council Bluffs resident in Council Bluffs Community School District alumni. And from my experience within the community, as well as the school district, is why I am running and I'm passionate about being on the board and being there for students and their families, all employees of the district, as well as community members. So I look forward to you learning a little bit more about me through my answers to these questions that will be asked today and also seeing you in between now and Election Day. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren, and thanks for being on. And we'll now go to Pat Peters.
Hi there. Just want to make sure you guys can hear me. So my name is Pat Peters. I've lived in Council Bluffs most of my life. And by day, I'm a software developer at Gallup and a graduate student finishing my master's degree in cybersecurity at UNO. I was born in Omaha, raised here in Council Bluffs in a family of eight, my two parents and six of us kids. Being part of such a big family made things difficult at times, but at some of our most crucial moments, the school district was able to step in and provide services such as reduced cost after-school care, reduced school lunch, reduced driver's ed, and a whole district full of teachers that were fantastic and available to help us out. One of the main reasons why I'm running for school board in Council Bluffs is I want to best ensure that my daughter Ellie, who starts school next year, and my newborn son Andrew, that they have as positive an experience in the school district when they start school, as I did and the rest of my family did. I figured the best way is to roll up my sleeves and get involved. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. And Jared, that brings us to you for your minute of opening comments.
Hi, Jared Tripp. I've been in Council Bluffs since 2005, but not far away. Grew up in Traynor. Running for school board simply because I have a vested interest in the school and this education. I have two daughters that go to Collegeville Elementary, kindergarten and second grade. And as a parent, I'm concerned with the school just as much as the rest of the parents are. And I'm here to represent not only the parents and the public, the taxpayers, the entire staff of the school district. I want to hear what's going on, what's good, what's bad, what needs changed. And that's why I'm here, just trying to give back to the community the best I can.
Well, thank you, Jared. And before we move on to Lewis Central, I just wanted to make sure I did not believe I saw anyone join who was another candidate, Robin or Cynthia, for CB Schools, but I just wanted to make sure that that was not the case. Perfect. So in that case, we will move on to Lewis Central, and you will have each, obviously, a minute for opening remarks as well. And we'll start with Bob Hendricks.
Thank you. And welcome to this afternoon to everyone. My name is Bob Hendricks. I'm running for reelection to Lewis Central School Board because I feel that it's an important opportunity within the district. We have a lot of construction going on. We are in the process of starting a search for a new superintendent that I participated in, the search for our last superintendent. I have three children that are raised and grown educators, and their experience has provided me with a great interest and desire. And we have great opportunities to talk about education as we meet and discuss. And I also have three grandchildren that are now students in the Lewis Central Community Schools. So I have a vested interest in making sure that the school district continues to grow and educate them to be great students of the community. Thank you.
And that brings us to Jen McDaniel.
Hi, my name is Jen McDaniel. I'm Jennifer McDaniel on the ballot. So I did change my name, Drew, but yeah, before I was Jen. And I am also running for Lewis Central School Board. I've been a school board member for the past four years. I was also on the last superintendent selection team, and I would like that opportunity to be able to help with the selection of our next superintendent. I do have two students that have gone through the Lewis Central District, one that's graduated, one that's in high school. I am also opposite side of Bob. I am the daughter of two public school teachers and a public school graduate myself. So I understand some of the issues that teachers face every day. And I am a supporter of our staff, our teachers and our students, and want to see the best outcomes possible for everyone in the Lewis Central community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Doreen, that brings us to you.
Okay.
Thank you for this opportunity.
My name is Doreen Shuffle. I am running for reelection for the Lewis Central School Board. I actually have been, I'm finishing up my 18th year on Lewis Central School Board, but I have volunteered at Lewis Central for probably 30 years. My, I've lived in the district for 34 years, but when my children, I have four children, all four children have graduated from Lewis Central. My husband, Mike, sat down and said, someone needs to get involved in school. And my husband said, I will make supper and put the kids to bed. Go at it. So that's what I did. And I've been a part of PTA president twice. I helped with Booster Club concession stands. I've been on three bond issues for the Lewis Central School District. And I just want to continue on the district because we do have a superintendent search and we have projects going. And I think that my experience will help. Thank you.
Thank you, Doreen, and thank you to the five other candidates as well between the two districts for their opening remarks. As we move into the Q and A portion, once again, you'll have a minute to respond to these questions. Again, I will be within reason, flexible with a little bit of the time. If you need to finish up a few comments, we'll allow that. But we will try to enforce that one minute as much as possible. For those who are on here as attendees, please do feel free to add questions in the chat box. That's something that I will monitor, and then I'll make sure that those are asked to the candidates. You'll only get questions from me just to make sure it's as seamless as possible. But do feel free, as an attendee, to put any questions in the chat that you would want to make sure that the candidates are asked. So the first question that we'll ask is we'll go back and we'll start with Lauren, as we did with opening comments. And that's how we'll go. We'll just work our way down. So each of you will have opportunities every about sixth time at this point to answer first. The first question that I wanted to start with you, Lauren, on is what do you see as the biggest strength and opportunity for the CB School District and why?
So I think our biggest strength is currently one of our biggest strengths. It's that we have great relationships that we've been able to build, but also maintain with, you know, our government entities, as well as the business community and also new leaders in our community. And we've been able to develop a lot of great collaborations, such as the Work Trade Program, the Early College Academy, College Access Program that I was a part of in so many things that I bended from, to also a lot of innovative collaborations that wouldn't have happened otherwise, but we took advantage of during the past couple of years with all these ups and downs and unknowns, such as students having access to an EBT card, free rides with the metro buses, just to name a few. And I think we can continue to build on that. And that's something that will keep moving our district forward.
Thanks, Lauren. And Pat, same question to you. What do you see as the biggest strength and opportunity for the CB School District?
Yeah, so I would say probably one of the biggest strengths is our network of resources, a little bit similar to what Lauren had mentioned with our relationships. I know that many of our ties in the business community, like some of the support that we've gotten from companies like Google, is very important and has really kind of helped put our district on the map as far as a leading edge in technology. And I also think that our network of resources, as far as what I mentioned earlier in my introduction, we have a fantastic network of teachers and staff in our district that I think are fantastic. It's one of the main reasons that I got into this is to make sure that they're represented well and that they have a voice. But yeah, I'd say those are probably the two strongest resources, in my opinion, is our connection to the community, both in terms of business resources and, you know, residents, and then also our network of teachers and employees.
And Jared, same question to you. Biggest strength and also any opportunities you see for the district?
Certainly, I think the biggest strength that we have is the push for futures. We have the Trade Works Program and the Iowa Western College Credit Courses that we give, just like Lauren had mentioned. This is a huge thing, and not a lot of districts do. I think we're really promoting our students to be active after high school. Supporting Trade Works is a major opportunity for a lot of kids that college might just not be, that's their thing. Also, I think technology is great. We have K through 12 now that has access to Chromebooks or whatever they happen to be. So they have the ability to use Internet at home wherever they need it. And the technology portion of this is very strong for the Council Bluffs District as well.
Thank you, Jared. And Bob, that brings us to you. What do you see as the biggest strength and also some potential opportunities for LC's School District?
The biggest strength, I think, that we have is the staff and administration that the district has created. We work and strive very hard to hire and retain the best educators that we have. We've actively approached improving our buildings and lighting facilities that will make Lewis Central a better school for the community and the community as a whole, because we are a large district that grows a lot of students from open enrollment. So it's very important for us to have the things that students are looking for. Opportunities, as you see as you drive by our building, there's a large auditorium going up. I mean, that's going to offer a lot of opportunities for the community and for the students and potential graduates that will have. So I think that sort of aligns where we're at at this point in time.
Thank you, Robert. And that brings us to Jen McDaniel. What do you see as the biggest strengths and then also some opportunities for the Lewis Central District?
I think Lewis Central has a lot of strengths, just from the academic side of things, which is what we are in school for. We have, as some of the Council Bluffs members mentioned, we have college credit opportunities through Iowa Western. We have trade program opportunities through Iowa Western. We have community partners with Adventures and Potawatomi Promise that is offered to our students. As Bob mentioned, we have great staff, great teachers, and want to see that continue. And then as far as the programs we offer, we have a great reputation and we have some great recognition that has happened with some of our programs. In academics, we have had success in speech and in national merit semifinalists. In sports, we've had state champs and state going to state. And then in fine arts, we also have some great recognition to our band and our choir and a lot of strengths at Lewis Central.
Thank you, Jennifer. And that brings us to you, Doreen, to close out the question on strengths in the district and also opportunities.
Well, with Bob and Jen going first, all I can do is say I agree with both of them. But Lewis Central has a lot going on and a lot of great things going on. There's so many to mention. But the one thing, it comes back to the teachers and the staff, the administration, bringing
Oh, thank you.
Bringing things to the board so we can move it forward. Because sitting at the board table, we're not going to figure out things that need to be done in our schools. But with good staff, good teachers, good administrators, we have, Lewis Central moves forward. And I, like I said, I agree with both of them. We have great extracurricular activities. We have great clubs. We have great academics. And we are seen with the competitions and that, that we have high rankings.
Thank you, Doreen. And the next question, we'll start with you, Pat. And it comes to the opposite of this one. You know, as you look at kind of a typical SWOT analysis, what do you see are some weaknesses or challenges and opportunities on that side of the thing of the spectrum for the district and why?
Yeah, so part of what I think is weakest with our district is actually because of one of our strengths. I do feel like we have a fantastic network of teachers and employees in our district. But unfortunately, from talking to many of them while knocking on doors and canvassing, it sounds like a lot of people, a lot of our teachers and employees feel like they don't have a voice in the district, and they feel like they're not completely represented by their administration. I feel like that's something that we, is not a unique problem to our district. I feel like that's a problem, honestly, across the country. But especially in this district, when we talk about negotiations with contracts and benefits. So that's something that is one of the main focal points in my campaign is to try and better represent our teachers. So that way, they feel they have a voice and feel that they're represented by their school district. So I'd say that's the 10 seconds I have left. That's probably the biggest thing that needs addressing.
Thank you, Pat. And Jared, same question to you. What do you see as some of the biggest challenges and opportunities on that side of things for the CB School District?
Sure. Between both the public, the teachers, and the parents, it seems like communication is a weakness that we have, whether it's simply communication from the school going out to parents, or it's between parents and teachers. And the reasoning that I've found out from that is actually a staffing issue. There's not enough staff for them to have free time. A lot of teachers are explaining that they don't have a free period in order to plan, in order to communicate back with teachers, to respond to emails and such. So that seems to be a big weakness that everybody has jumped in on saying that needs to be changed.
Thank you, Jared. And that brings us down to the LC side of things. With Robert, what do you see as perhaps the biggest weakness and challenge facing Lewis Central going forward?
I think one of our biggest challenges is something that you have as, as having a rural district, we're not necessarily one community or one town. So we don't have the community necessarily that ties to us or looks at us as part of that community. So we've been working very hard. And I feel that Dr. Knost has done a great job of building that relationship with the community to bring Lewis Central into that community. And we will use that as a very important tool as we work forward to hiring our next superintendent.
Thank you, Robert. And Jen, same question to you. What do you see are some potential weaknesses and challenges facing Lewis Central going forward?
Something that we have been working on over several years is updating all of our facilities. And while that's a strength and we have some great facilities, I think that's also an opportunity for us as we look towards the future to both maintain those facilities and look at what those next steps are and what we might have needs for in the future. I also think that, as in any public school district, funding is always a challenge. And to keep Lewis Central a desirable school district, to keep kids living in the district who want to enroll in Lewis Central, to keep open enrollment up, is something to always be looking at, is what can we do to keep improvements moving forward in the district?
Good. Thank you, Jennifer. And Doreen, we end with you on some potential weaknesses and challenges for the district.
I think the biggest challenge that all schools have is finding monies to pay the hourly staff. I think that is one thing, because we're, the state of Iowa directs us in what we can spend the money on. So we have funds and different things. You can only spend money on buildings. You can only spend money on salaries from the general fund. And finding that money, because every year, we want to support our teachers and administrators and for all their work they've done and pay raises, and then trying to do that equally with our hourly staff, who they are some of the hardest workers in our district, that with the piers and bus drivers, food service and secretarial staff. And finding people to take those jobs can be a struggle at times, and bus drivers for one. So I think that's our biggest challenge at Lewis Central.
Thanks, Doreen. And you hit on something we'll talk about a little bit later, is workforce and some of those challenges. And not only how it impacts the district, but also how the district assists with organizations like ours to help address that issue. We do need to have Lauren come back and finish up with that question that provides her biggest, from her perspective, the biggest weaknesses potentially and challenges facing this school district. And this is CB Schools, obviously, in this case.
Yes. So there are a few things. I'm going to echo Pat and Jared. The first is employee retention is definitely a challenge that our district is facing. And we have a lot of opportunities to overcome that. The district has been great at recruiting and developing employees for a long time and just figuring out those key factors that may be different for each employee. And ways to address it will be really important because there may be similarities across the board. The next is communication among the school board and the community, among schools and the community as well. That's something that I think we have a lot of opportunity for improvement and ways we can grow. And then the last one is just helping our schools and our district in general, recovering from the pandemic and moving forward and focusing on things that we used to, but we can't do that without addressing it head on. So I think the social, emotional learning that the district has already been focusing on is great, and that will be a really good opportunity to help the district move forward.
Thanks, Lauren. And to avoid having to come back with Lauren like the last time and having to jump between districts, we'll just do it. We'll go switch it up so everyone has different chances to answer, but we'll go by district just to make it. So when we hit down to Robert doing the answering first, we'll go through LC and then we'll jump up to CB just for simplicity's sake and not any confusion as to who's talking on behalf of which district as a candidate. So the next question, Jared, we'll start with you. And it's what do you see your primary role as if elected? What would be your primary role as a school board member? And what do you see your role as in as far as relation to, say, district administration and staff?
I think my primary role would be to listen and to take what's being said and try to actually do something, like take action. Too many times, I see board members, they come to the board meetings just to vote on the agenda and go back home. No real drive to go that extra mile for everybody that's involved. So that's my position would be, I'm here. I want to know. I want to learn. I want to help.
And do you have anything to add as far as what you would see as your primary role with, say, like administration and staff as far as your role as a board member?
My primary role with administration, well, oversees policies, procedures, governance as usual. As far as staff, you know, I want to be here for everybody. Like I said, an open door, that they're able to come to me and discuss issues and know that something's going to be brought up to the rest of the board. If they come to me, I will be, I'll be a voice for them to present.
Thanks, Jared. And Lauren, we now go to you with the same question. If elected, what would you see your primary role as a board member being? And then also, what would you see your role being with administration and staff for the schools as well?
So as board members, we're representatives of not only the community, but what Drew mentioned, you know, students, staff, administration, you know, all of the above. So knowing that we're representing these people and making decisions in the best interest is what's going to be very important. That's the role of a board member, you know, with policies, but also being an advocate. And also, you know, making sure you're aware of things as well, such as, you know, other duties and responsibilities with the board and as a board member. But with communication, I would definitely make sure that people understand what's going on and know what the breakdown of the agenda is. Because, you know, us being on board, on the board and even running for board, we know that jargon, or we have to learn it. And that's not always in layman's terms for the community or staff or administration. So I think that's definitely somebody I, something I would do and educate people, because you can't have power without knowledge. So I see that definitely branching out into many different aspects. So hopefully that answers that. But those are some of my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. And Pat, we'll end with you on that. What do you see your primary role being if elected to school board? And what do you see your role being as far as interaction with the administration and staff?
Yeah, so I feel my primary role as a school board member is actually twofold. First and most importantly, I believe it's my role to ensure that the decisions that are made for the district are what's best for the district, students and staff. If elected to the Council of School Board, any measure I'd be voting on, I'd first ask myself how that decision helps our kids. If I feel like the measure I'm voting on doesn't support our kids, I'm not going to support that measure. Now, getting to my role with the administration, I definitely want to try and increase communication as best I can. I feel like sometimes what tends to happen, and I've noticed this especially with many parents voicing opinions during meetings, is there, it sounds like there's almost a bit of a discrepancy between what the administration and the school board thinks is going on in the schools versus when we hear from teachers, students and parents, what's actually going on. And so I'd be trying to really limit that discrepancy as much as I can and try and help communicate effectively.
Well, thank you, Pat. And we'll jump down to Lewis Central now. Robert, we'll start with you. Same question. What would you see as your primary role as a school board member and also your role in interaction with staff and administration?
Yeah. The responsibilities of a board member legally are to hire and administer the superintendent. But part of that also has to be understanding what's important for the district, understanding how the superintendent reacts with the rest of the administration and staff and, you know, the rest of the employees that the district is handling. So I guess that's where I see my role, is understanding what the superintendent is doing and how that is impacting the education that our students are getting. And then to make sure that we hire employees that meet those needs and fill out that responsibility and that we're financially, financially responsible with the resources that we're using to make sure all the things within the district are taking place and happening.
Thank you, Robert. Jennifer, same question to you. Your primary role as a board member and also in interacting with administration, faculty and staff?
I agree with what Bob said. And on top of that, I believe board members should be informed and involved. Like Doreen, I volunteered in PTA when my kids were younger. I'm currently on a counselor's advisory group and a high school parents advisory group. I think it's important to show support to your school, to be involved, to have the knowledge of what's happening. I always want to hear from the people in the community, if they do have questions, to be able to track down those answers or point them in the right direction of where they can get those answers. But just to be involved, informed, and as Bob stated, to choose a superintendent that will help oversee the district in the best way possible and to choose the best candidate for that position.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Doreen, we end with you on that question. What do you see as your primary role? Obviously, you've had a number of years in the position, so I'm interested to see what you, over the years, have come to recognize your primary role as a board member in your interaction with faculty, staff and administration.
Yeah, I do have some experience as far as the role after this election. Having a board seat, I don't see my role changing. The one good thing with incumbents is that we have been at the board table. We have, you can see the success of the district. And but the one thing that people think is that, oh, I'll just call her and she can fix it. And that's not how it works. You cannot micromanage. A board member can't do that. Everything I hear, if this needs to be addressed, if I'm contacted, I direct that back to the superintendent. I don't call the principal and try to fix it. I, it's, our job is to form policy and enforce it to, so the district runs to evaluate the curriculum and then also to hire the superintendent and let him do his job to run the district day to day.
Thank you, Doreen. I appreciate your insight. And one thing, you'll notice, I will jump in and take some liberties every now and then with some comments after some things. And one thing I've seen in my experiences with boards, whether it's elected or public nonprofit, whatever it is, it's what you just said, it's the non-micromanaging piece. It's the piece that you go to that top executive that you hire and you bring it to them, and it's their job to follow through. If they don't, then there's things that need to be done. But that's obviously some good perspective. And in my experience, that has been what has been most effective. So I appreciate your insight, Doreen. The next question that I want to make sure that we bring up, we'll start with Lewis Central again, or this time, excuse me. And we'll start with you, Robert. And what I want to ask you about is, you know, these positions are nonpartisan. But one thing we've continued to see is some partisan politics and has kind of trickled down into some local nonpartisan politics. So we actually have a question from one of the attendees, and it is divisive politics is reaching into school districts nationally. What is your position on navigating being an elected official in a representative form of government when you have a differing personal belief on a particular issue being brought before the board?
I guess as I look at it, my beliefs I guess as, as I look at it, my beliefs help drive some of the decisions I make. But my seat on the board is to make the best decisions that I can that direct the superintendent and the direction and policy of, of the district. Politics aside, you still have to look at what's best for the student and what's best for the district. It might not necessarily be ideally what I think should be best, but it's how is that best for the students, the staff and the success of the district? And that's how I approach any issue that I address or look at.
Well, thank you, Robert. And Jennifer, we go to you and it has to do with the divisive politics. How do you keep divisive politics and any personal opinions out of how you may act as a school board member, especially in a nonpartisan office?
I because I am not a teacher or trained in education by trade, I'm an accountant. I need to rely on the expertise of the people in our district for curriculum choices, for programs that they're running. And as far as this global pandemic we were in, our district relied on our local health officials to help us with those decisions. And I think as a board member, you need to set aside your personal beliefs and listen to those community experts to help you make the most informed decision you can make.
Thank you, Jennifer. Doreen, we'll close with you for the Lewis Central side of things on how do you handle that? How do you navigate being an elected official when you may have a differing personal belief on an issue?
Actually with this campaign, I have been asked several times about what my political views are. And it doesn't matter because I have learned with my experience that when I come to the board table, I don't want to have a preconceived answer or vote. I want to see what the experts are telling us. I want to hear discussion with other board members. And I want to make the best decision that can be made for the 3,000 plus students and staff. Because what I believe and what I think that maybe for my one child is best, it just might not be best for the entire district. And so we make decisions on the data that, from the experts and people that know about it. And, and that's how I make my decisions. Politics aren't on the table.
Thank you, Doreen, and thank you, Robert and Jennifer as well. We'll move up to Council Bluff School District candidates, same question. And Lauren, we'll start with you. How do you keep your differing personal beliefs on a particular issue out of any issue being considered by the board in a nonpartisan office?
As you mentioned, the office is nonpartisan and that's very important. That's why there's a lot of respect and trust, even if it's kind of dwindled over the years. But that's how school boards have always been known for is trust and respect and that these people are representing what's best for students and staff and the community. And that's why I'm running for office. And if on the board, that's how I view things. That's how you learn and grow, listening to others' perspectives. Collaborating with other board members, knowing that there's tough decisions, there can be pros and cons on both sides. But when it comes down to it, what's the best for the district? And it is turning to those experts, like all of us have been talking about. It can be things we've heard across the district too, that maybe need to be brought attention to. And just knowing that it's out there too, even if, you know, it may not be the decision that is something we're hearing across the board, but we know it's what's best for our students and what the experts are advising us. And I think clearing stuff up too, letting people know like, hey, we're here for you. And this is what we can do, X, Y, and Z, you know, that can clear some of that confusion up. But it all comes down to just being there for people and knowing you're representing them.
Thank you, Lauren. And Pat, we go to you now on that same issue. How do you separate your own personal beliefs on a particular issue sitting in a nonpartisan office?
So yes, so I'll be honest, this is my very first time running for office ever. I, I think there's quite a few of us actually on here that this is our first times running. But I think whether this is your first time, second time, fourth time, you know, whatever. The thing to keep in mind is that we're all learning as we're, as we're progressing. And we, as Doreen and Bob had mentioned, it's, it's very important for us to listen to all the, all the opinions that are, that are being presented to us from, from experts. I don't know everything about education. I don't know everything about technology. I'm definitely going to be looking to, to the experts who, who talk to us. At the same time, I, every, as I mentioned earlier, every decision that, that needs to be made, at least for me personally, I'm focusing on why I'm doing this and doing this for, you know, for our kids, for, for our students, for our staff. And just really keeping that in mind and checking any, you know, politic, political beliefs that I might have out the door when I walk in to, you know, potentially vote.
Thank you, Pat. And Jared will end that question with you on the personal beliefs out of the decision-making at the board table.
Sure. You, you can't make a decision without knowledge and understanding. And not being able to divorce yourself from the issue at hand and look at the bigger picture. You'll never actually have a true understanding because you won't hear it from both sides. I do this daily in my professional life. I'm, I'm in risk management. I'm an insurance adjuster. My job is to investigate, get both sides of the story so that I can put the picture back together and make an educated decision on what actually happened. So just the past 15, 20 years of my life, that's what I do. I divorce myself from the issue. I look at the bigger picture. It, it doesn't matter what my opinion is. It matters what actually is going on.
Thank you, Jared. It always helps when you can have real life experience to lean back on. The next question, we'll start with Jen. And it's been talked about by several of you, especially in LC, because you guys obviously have some projects going on. Your guys' high school and other areas, but can you touch a little bit on some major capital projects and their handling? And how if elected, you'll continue to see those things move forward?
Yes, like you mentioned, we have an auditorium that's currently being built and our operations building that's currently under construction and seeing those projects through successfully. And when those issues come to the board, if there's change orders or other things we need to discuss related to them, that is part of the coming in with the open mind, hearing all the facts and making the decisions based on that. And like I mentioned previously, we are currently working on that. And then moving forward, I'd like to see the maintenance aspect and kind of looking towards the future of what are those next steps? We don't know that yet because we have had these two large projects going on, but I'd like to see that focus brought back as we move forward and these projects get completed successfully.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Doreen, same question to you. Can you talk a little bit about the board's role and the importance of overseeing capital projects and the management of those?
Right. We have two, two major plus a, a part of the, while auditorium also has an addition to the high school too. But basically, once we have these decided, they're in motion. The board, we don't stop. We've already talked about what's our five-year plan? What's our 10-year plan? We've asked our, our buildings manager, the building and grounds manager, what's 20 years? Because we have to look at when does the track need to be replaced? When does the football field need to be replaced? Where are we at with roofs? Where, where do, and we need a timeline of that. Because we're to the point now that we need to look at the next step before these projects get done. So we can go ahead and, and move forward and keep Lewis Central up to date and the maintenance on already existing buildings. What do we need to do?
Thank you, Doreen. And we'll close out with a Robert for Lewis Central on the oversight of capital projects and in their handling as a board member.
The, yeah, the process of determining what needs to be done is, is an important step that you have to go through. And now that we're moving forward with our auditorium and, and operations buildings, we need to look at, well, it's going to change size of our district buildings. So you have to be preparing and planning for the maintenance and the upkeep of those buildings as well as looking to the future and identifying what needs to be done to the existing buildings you have, or what other things can we do that will improve our district? And continue to make it the place that students choose for their education. So it's, it's not something that's you set in stone and you let it, let it sit there. It's something that's a live document, a live process continues to grow and change almost on a daily basis.
Thank you, Robert. And jumping up to CB school district candidates. Lauren, we'll start with you on, can you talk a little bit about your perspective or your thoughts on what your role will be in overseeing capital projects and their handling as a potential school board member?
Yes. So, you know, as a board member, when projects come before you or they're being proposed, it's very important to know everything that's involved with it. Finances, legal responsibilities, construction, so many things. And getting more education about that is something, I'll be honest, I'll have to learn about. But one thing I've heard from people is just having more information. So they know what's going on and that communication, I know. Communication is great, but sometimes, you know, we have our flaws and making sure that we understand that and making great efforts to still work with the community and let them know what's going on is going to be helpful. And one thing I can think of is the early childhood care center. It's definitely a need in our community and a want and people don't fully understand it. And just, you know, giving them more education will be helpful, answering their questions, addressing their concerns and making sure that it's handled well, you know, as a board member, that it will be successful will be something that I would be a part of being on the board.
Thank you, Lauren. And Pat, same question to you is what do you see your role being in overseeing and handling major capital projects as a potential school board member?
Yeah. So one of the things I think is, is absolutely crucial in handling a large, you know, projects like this is communication. I feel especially with some of, some of the projects that, that we're currently in the process of, like what Lauren had mentioned with the early child care center. I was thinking also to the, the selling of the Madison campus. And I thought communication was, was really key in, in a lot of that as far as, you know, there's multiple, multiple decisions that have to be made with these. And I feel like we need to try and make sure that, that we get all the facts out there and that everyone really is communicating. And now part of this is actually being able to manage what is, what's being first, what's second and third as far as these projects is something that's definitely a learning curve for me as far as my role. But just really trying to make sure that we've, that I've asked, you know, all the questions that would be required of me to, to make sure that everything is talked through regarding these projects is, is probably one of my, my main roles.
Thanks, Pat. And Jared, same question to you on major capital projects?
Sure. Role of the school board for these major capital projects would be to review and approve the project itself. Looking over the contractor that's being used, budgeting purposes, looking, looking ahead in the future to make sure that we have the money to do the project. Also prioritizing which projects are actually needed necessary first and having a direct timeline. I agree with Robert, what he said, that this a living document, just because there's a timeline that says over the next 10 years, this, 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 and this is going to happen. Doesn't mean that all of a sudden this other school's parking lot is completely in shambles and it needs to be moved up. So it, it's just a constant review of what's going on, what's coming up and making the hard decision of where the funds end up going. That helps the district the best.
Thank you all for answering that. And I will say, I know, for example, we're looking forward to doing a ribbon cutting at LC here in the not too distant future for some of the improvements they've made. The early learning center was noted. That's something we've had a lot of conversations about because that's a huge workforce issue, childcare. And the thought of universal pre-K excites a lot of people just because that's hugely embedded within the workforce issue. So that's a huge, huge project and we really look forward to working with the administration in the school district on that and other projects that the school district's working on, because there's a role for us to play a lot of the time in those. So thank you for noting those. So the last question for else that we'll start with Lewis Central on, and we'll go with Doreen and start with Doreen is you have some experience in doing this, but can you talk about the importance of working with other governmental entities as a school board member? And I don't just mean the city council or the county board. I mean, all the way up to your state legislators and your members of Congress. So can you talk a little bit about that and your role as a school board member in doing so?
The one thing that, to me, that's personal on how much you want to be an advocate for your school district and going to the state legislature. That's a big thing to, to talk to them, let them know what the school district's needs are. Working with local, which would be the city, city council. Because we, Lewis Central does have a challenge where we're not Council Bluff School District, but we're a school district in Council Bluffs. And so making sure that people understand what Lewis Central needs are because we struggle just as much on, on different things as other school districts do. And, and then basically letting, you know, the state level, federal level, writing letters, letting people know what, what the needs are at our district.
Thanks, Doreen. And Robert, same question to you. What do you see your role as a school board member in working with other governmental entities at all levels of government?
Well, like, one of the things that, you know, has helped me stay involved with our local officials is the chambers meet the legislative things that they have on those Saturdays during the winter. I attend all of those. I also have volunteered and served on Iowa Association for School Board. I represent the school districts in Southwest Iowa on that board. And we meet with legislatures and we have, you know, an opportunity to talk with them. So I feel that I try to work to do things that make education, you know, in the forefront of, of everybody's mind. And the other thing that I think often gets forgotten is, you know, as Doreen said, we're, we're a, a school district in Council Bluffs. But 70% of our students live in the city of Council Bluffs. So we do have a, we, we are educating a large portion of, of those students. So it's important that, you know, we work with those issues and, and understand what those needs are also.
Thank you. And that brings us to you, Jennifer. Same question on working with other governmental entities at all levels of government as a school board member.
Yeah, as a school board member, I will agree that it's a personal decision of how much you are involved. I have attended IASB, the Iowa Association of School Boards meetings. I've been the voting representative for a district for a few of those years. I've reached out to our state legislature on a couple of issues. And Dr. Knoest, and this goes back to the hiring of a superintendent, has done an excellent job representing our district in a lot of those city relationships that we have. So I think that's an important part too, as we look towards finding a new superintendent who can also have those great connections within our community and to promote Lewis Central.
Thank you, Jennifer. And jumping up to the Council Bluffs school, school board candidates. Pat, we'll start with you this time. Just what are your thoughts on your role if elected and working with other governmental entities and representatives thereof?
I think it starts with especially focusing on listening. I, I want to make sure that I'm staying up to date with everything that's happening, you know, with our, with, with our city and with our, with our state. If there's going to be, you know, changes to curriculum requirements that, you know, come from the state, that's something that I want to make sure I'm, I'm listening and, and and know what's coming. That way I could plan for our future. With, with that being said, I feel as what Bob and Jennifer already mentioned, is being an advocate for our school district is especially important. If that means getting, getting involved in, in Nautse groups. That's something I definitely want to participate in. That's something that I, that I try to do volunteering. I volunteer with a, a local nonprofit that focuses on getting out the vote. But I think it's also important to volunteer for groups that, that are better connected to the school district. So yeah, especially listening and, and being an advocate for the school district are the, the two primary ways I see myself of representing our school district and the community and state.
Thank you. Pat and Jared, that brings us to you on your thoughts on being involved in working with other governmental entities if elected.
Yeah, Pat really nailed it on listening. As, as far as being a member of the board, you're a member of the board. You are not the board. So you, you want to be part of the legislation. You want to know what's going on, but you're there to listen. You're not there to actually speak for the school because you're only one person. So your role would be to learn. Your role would be, you know, like Pat said, listen and understand what's going on, bring it back to discuss later. But as far as anything further than that, yeah, I, I would say if you want to be more of an advocate for the school, that should be a personal choice, not, not so much your role. That should be a personal choice, not not so much your role as the school board member.
Thanks, Jared. And Lauren will end with you on that question with regards to interactions with other governmental entities.
Yeah, so I think at a state level or regional level, maybe even national. Government entities can be a really great support. So I know the Iowa School Board. Association was mentioned, so that's something especially new board members can turn to. But with that is listening and learning from current board members and hearing from them about. How they've already partnered with local entities as well and how we've come up with solutions. There could be things that are affecting both the city and our school district. Or. Partnerships that can come about and affect the city and the school district. So I think that's very important. To note, but also knowing too, if we do want to do something as a board. You know, such as advocating for our district in some way, understanding why that would be important, how we want to do it and what it would be about. And making sure that's known to the community about this is why we're going to move forward and advocate to our state reps and legislators. So I think that's another thing to that kind of incorporates with all of that.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lauren. And we'll actually start with you this time because we're back up to Council Bluffs now to start and. If you could accomplish one thing if elected in the next four years, what would it be and why?
Very loaded question and broad. And I don't make promises to anyone except for just being the best representative I can be in being there on the board. And being a collaborator and a team player and just knowing that people know I'm there for them. And helping them out in whatever way I can within the board's duties and responsibilities. That's what I want people to know is that. You know, there's. A lot when it comes to being a board member. It's not a piece of cake. It's not easy. There's a lot of research and. Reading and personal growth and development and just knowing. That's a part of the process as well in the next four years. But then listening and taking that stuff back to, and like I said, just knowing it all comes down to representing them and doing. What's in the best interest of the school board when it come or school district when it comes down to it being on the board.
Let me try asking it a different way rather than a one thing accomplished in the next four years. What would be your top priority if elected?
So one thing I've been thinking about a lot is how we can have better representation for our staff. Like I mentioned, we have a really good district, but also. Retention is a problem. So if there's a way that. Contracts could be read earlier, same with possibly being negotiated. That's something that's definitely a priority and on my mind and I've heard from a lot of people because we know when our teachers. Are having a voice and they feel like they're in the best work environment, it's going to dwindle down to our classrooms and our students. And then it branches out to our community.
Thank you, Lauren. And Pat, same question to you, if elected, what would be your top priority and why?
I kind of mentioned this a little bit earlier, but probably my my top priority is, like I said, ensuring that our teachers and employees feel like they have a voice. With with their community and their school board. Another a another priority that I haven't really mentioned yet, so I want to try and talk about a little bit is. Is I do want to try and increase tech literacy across the school district. As I mentioned earlier, we have this fantastic strength in our in our school district of having fantastic tech resources. And I just want to make sure that we're that we're better ensuring that our students, you know, not only have the best devices and have, you know, the best connections, but they. Definitely know how to use them safely and securely. That gets back to cybersecurity techniques that I kind of been learning about while I've been in graduate school and things like that. So. I kind of cheated on my answer as far as I said, two priorities instead of one, but. Ensuring our teachers have a voice and then trying to increase tech literacy across the school district are two two priorities that I'm especially focused on.
Thank you, Pat and Jared will wrap up with you for C D.
Certainly, I think the highest priority I'd have would be building a better relationship with our community. We can see how divisive and harsh everybody is on all kinds of topics. And for the school and the community to be in line, that would be helpful to everybody that would help the staff, that would help the students, that would help the parents. Everybody would have a better experience coming out of the school if that relationship was stronger.
Thanks, Jared. And we'll jump down to Lewis Central and Robert will start with you. What would be your top priority? If you're elected to serve a turn another for your term?
I think the biggest priority that I have is that we. Navigate the search for a superintendent and come up with a superintendent that is. Matches the needs that the district have. That can bring. You know, the same kind of thoughtfulness and openness and. Interest in the community that we that we currently have and that we are preparing. You know, our students to to go forth and, you know, and make the city of Council Bluffs and the state of Iowa a better place to live.
Thank you, Robert. And Jen, same question to you, your top priority for elected.
I would echo Bob that my top priority would be to hire a superintendent that was then and Pat, I'm going to follow you and cheat a little bit here on. Making sure that he's. Helping to enhance or continue to grow those top priorities of mine, which are always to continue student growth and achievement and well being. To help with teacher retention and recruitment. And support staff. And retaining recruiting and helping to grow their salaries as much as we can within vegetarian restraints. And then also just to be fiscally responsible to taxpayers, to our Lewis Central community. And to help with those capital projects going forward.
Thank you, Jennifer and Dorian will end this question on you about your top priority.
I it's the superintendent search. That is one out of three things that the board does and we need to. Look again for a superintendent that can do everything that Jen mentioned that will. Focus on our mission, our values, what our district goals are. This is one thing with our board. All but one of the seven have been on a superintendent search recently, you know, in the last few years. And so we have the experience, we know. What people were going to ask, see what people want different in a superintendent. I don't think that will change much. But we still need to get community input and and the superintendent search is going to be the number one thing in the next few months.
Thanks, Doreen. And this question will start with you, Pat, and it's. For those who may be incumbents, it's going to be a little bit of a different answer and probably a shorter answer, but I'll start with you. Pat, it's how do you envision yourself fitting in with with the rest of the board? But then also with the superintendent and administration that you would also work with if elected.
Yeah, so I I feel especially in this case, the two things I'll be doing the most is listening. As I mentioned, this is my first time running. If elected, this will be my first time on the school board. So I definitely want to. Listen to what's already, you know, what's already been done by by the school board and how I can be the most effective board member. And also trying to communicate as best I can. One thing that I mentioned earlier, as far as sometimes there can be a bit of a discrepancy between what the administration and the school board thinks is going on in the schools and what's actually happening in the schools. And I in trying to limit that as as best I can, I want to try and be an advocate for for our students and for our teachers as best I can and trying to. You know, meet regularly with with our with our teachers and with with our students the best I can. And try and communicate that best to the board. So listening and communication are definitely the the two things I'll be focused on focusing on most so that I work best with. Dr. Morello and the rest of the the school board.
Thank you, Pat and Jared. Same question to you. How will you go about making sure that you are. Are able to fit in well with the board and the administration? And how do you see that relationship going?
I hope it goes well. I find myself as a fairly understandable person. I'm not argumentative by any means, and I like to hear both sides of every argument as being said. So with other boards that I've worked on, I've I've fit in well. I listen to everybody that has something to say. We think it over and kindly respond. I mean, most, most of the time. Being respectful of other people's opinions and thoughts is is the key to fitting in anywhere. So as long as you're able to manage yourself, leave your own opinions at the door and be there to understand and. Listen to understand instead of just to hear. I I think there would be no problem fitting in with any of the board members or administration.
Thank you. And Lauren, same question to you. How do you envision yourself fitting in with the rest of the board and also administration that you would work closely with?
I feel like I would fit in pretty well and part of that is because I'm very open minded. I'm a listener and also looking towards these individuals. For guidance, information and resources and having that clear communication is something that's very helpful. In any relationship and being on a board and serving individuals, but also. You know, just. Learning and listening, kind of what's been echoed. I mean, this is all new to the C B candidates if we're elected and a big part of that is. You know, understanding the process and. Just taking what you can from the experience. I mean, there's no way we're going to grow from that. So I think there's. A number of different things that, you know, personally I will do and that will help me fit in and just being there for people.
Thank you, Lauren. And I do have the, I want to ask a follow up question just to the three of you for C D schools because you're not incumbents. Have you had an opportunity to sit down and talk with the Dr. Morello and some senior administration or some other school board members to kind of talk through? On what your integration to the board and administration may look like if elected? And we'll start with you, Pat.
Yeah, so I I've gotten a chance to meet with a few of the school board members and also when I first had some of my ideas as far as tech literacy, I did meet with. The C T O, John Stiles. I have not gotten a chance to meet with Dr. Morello yet. She's next on my list to try and meet up with.
Thank you. And Jared, same question to you. Have you had an opportunity to meet with some of the top administration and other board members to talk through some some things of? To ensure your integration would be as seamless as possible?
I have not. I've spoken to some of the board members and I've met Dr. Morello. But no, we've we've never specifically sat down to discuss anything as, you know, I'm I'm just a candidate right now. So.
Thanks, Jared. And Lauren, same question to you.
Definitely echoing Jared and Pat. I have spoken to some former members and understandably you can't get a current picture of what the board is like. But just hearing about their experience and knowing a little bit about how the board functions was helpful. And just kind of motivating me to run. And I have spoken with some current board members and I haven't talked anything with them other than just being a candidate and running for school board. And I haven't met Dr. Morello yet or spoken with her, but that's something I definitely look forward to. But I think just from. Already having these open conversations, I think Jared and Pat would. Agree is that we can already tell we're communicating and talking with these individuals, you know, who are already part of the board and I think right there is pretty telling that. We could fit in.
Okay, well, thank you. That's just a question I always like to ask because. It's always nice to utilize other resources as much as possible. And I look forward to each of you getting a chance to meet with Dr. Morello. I do that. Quite frequently, as you can imagine, and she's always a very insightful. So I look forward to you guys having that opportunity as well prior to the election. I will jump over to Louis Central. I you don't have to answer this being that you're all incumbents, but I did want to just give you an opportunity. If there is something you think of note. That you wanted to mention and I'll just let any of you jump in if you want to on that question because like I said, being that you're incumbents, it's not necessarily as much of a question for you.
I can go. I think it goes back to I I'm the youngest newest, youngest in the sense of years on the board. That's all I mean. To the board, I've been on the board for four years and when I started, I did reach out to other board members with some questions and I was. You know, given advice, which I took in because it is a new experience being on. An elected board. I was actually appointed at first and I was in that appointed position. For four months before I had to run for my first election. This is my second. But also it goes back to the relying on experts and there are I A S B. Classes for new board members that I encourage any of you in Council Bluffs, if you're elected for the first time to partake in, they're very helpful and we do attend. I A S B, I A S B conference. Once a year in Des Moines. And there's different classes. That you can take in different breakout sessions. On different topics for school board members.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Robert or Doreen, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I I've been on the the board for 15 years and. I'd echo what Jennifer said. Yes, I A S B does do a great job of trying to educate and. Make it as seamless as possible for new board members to. Become active and understand how their roles match in with the board and what sort of the board responsibilities are. Also, in my time, I've worked. At on the I A S B board, I was appointed there three years ago, so I. Was working with a whole new group of board members and that is an important role that you have is to to learn and understand what the perspectives and what those. Thought processes for those members. So you understand where you can help them and where you can. Understand where they're coming from so that it makes the board. Decisions seem more seamless than opens the communication. So there's always an opportunity to to move forward.
Thank you, Robert. Doreen, did you have anything you wanted to add on that front?
Just a quick note is that no matter what. Even if you're new to the board, we still need to work together. And even if we're incumbents and running for the school board and. We we still respect each other, we still work together and I I know I and I'm confident. All the board members who who have are on Lewis Central that that they will continue to do that.
Thank you, Doreen. And next we'll start with Jared on this question and it's. How, excuse me, what would you classify? How would you classify your leadership style?
My leadership style is based on servant leadership. 100%. I get behind my people and I find out what I can do to make them better. There's no micromanaging, there's no top down and I'm not even a huge fan of chain of command. If somebody in my team needs to come to me directly. They come to me directly because I need that information as soon as possible to make my best decision. So. That's that's how I that's how I go servant leadership for sure.
Thank you, Jared. And we'll move to Lauren now on the same question. What? How would you classify your leadership style?
Definitely servant. I like to. Be there for people that I'm serving and represent them in the best way I can, but also a part of that it. Can help you by, you know, listening to other people and considering what they have shared with you in decisions and. I don't know, I just think it's, you know, a style I've always had. I've had it through different supervisory roles throughout my life and my current job. And it's definitely reflected in different ways, but some of them is just listening, being open minded. Having open communication, making sure things are comfortable for trust to be built, being respectful. And so that's kind of a little bit about my leadership and a little bit behind that servant life. Leadership style, so.
Thank you, Lauren. And Pat, same question to you on your leadership style.
Yeah, so I classify my leadership style, I guess it's three main pieces of learning, communicating and serving. I am. I am a firm believer that we are always learning and we're always encountering new experiences. And so I. I try to be as open as I can to to create new experiences and and whatever, you know, group organization, I'm I'm taking part in helping leading. Really maintaining open communication. I feel like that's that's key. I was trying to learn as the best I can and communicate as best and effectively as I can. And on the the serving aspect, I I especially love, you know, trying to get my hands dirty anytime I'm in a situation where I can kind of. I don't I don't want to say lead from behind, but really where I can where I can be involved, directly involved with the the people that I'm that I'm working with and leading. It's. Especially that that especially rings true for me. So those are probably the three things I focus on most is learning, communicating.
Thanks, Pat. And we'll jump down to you, Robert. What? How do you classify your leadership style?
Yeah, I I guess. My leadership style is I listen before I make a decision. And depending on. Where the organization or how the group is moving, it sort of determines the type of leadership style that you have to use. If a decision needs to be made. And need to help direct that decision, I work to do that. If. We need to support a decision that's being made, I work to make sure that there's a thorough understanding of it so that everybody's making the. An informed decision and understands the consequences of those decisions. So. It's just a style that I've developed from from years of of leadership and opportunities to lead organizations. I've been very involved in in. Not for profit organizations for so for many years. So it's just sort of a style I've developed.
Thank you, Robert. And Jennifer, same question to you on your leadership style.
I would say I. I would say I also servant leadership. I've been involved in volunteering for the district for years and also in the community. But also just that collaboration that comes with leadership. So a collaborative style and that is leaning on your fellow board members, listening to your community, your staff, your students and the needs out there. And using that information and working with others to lead and to make those decisions necessary and beneficial for the district.
Thank you, Jennifer. And we'll round out, end out with you, Doreen, on your leadership style.
I try to listen a lot. I would hope people would call me, but then also as sitting on a board, I don't want to know too much information because things need to be taken care of and issues resolved through the chain of command. We have board policy on that. Because, and I've told people before, I said, I, I can't know everything because if this issue comes before the board, then I have to recuse myself. I have to say, I can't vote, I can't, I can't be involved. And so being a board member, giving things back to the superintendent to handle, he can go to the principal, principal can go to the teacher, get it resolved before it comes to the board. And I think when it comes to other decisions, you know, data-driven decisions, ask more questions, understand from the people that know is how I, I am a board member.
Okay. I'm going to incorporate one of the questions we got from the chat into one of the ones I had and tie them together. So we've unfortunately seen quite a bit of tension at school board meetings, especially over the last year, year and a half. And there's been some very hot-button issues that pop up on some of these agendas and tempers and everything flare and things along those lines. So can you speak a little bit to how you handle that? But then also any other experience that you've had that helped shape you in doing that, whether it's on other boards of directors or other things along those lines. So we'll start with you, Robert. You mentioned some of your experience on some other boards of directors, but can you talk, one, about some of those tense issues and hot-button, politically charged issues that are now coming in front of elected officials like yourself and how you handle those? And then some other experiences you've had that have helped you along the way as to how to best handle those?
Yeah, one of the things that, that I try to do is, is listen and understand the perspective that people bring to, to that. You know, I, I got a lot of my experience, early I served three terms on the city council in Bed North Iowa when I lived there. And that was the time of the when riverboat gambling was just being brought forward. And it was something that was, you know, at a, at a very strong position on both sides. And I learned at that time that you had to listen and understand perspective and positions that people were taking and, and be able to ask questions. So you understood, you know, why, why they understood it to be that way and to make sure that everybody had a clear understanding of the decisions that the board was making and why the board was taking those positions. And I brought a lot of that sort of philosophy and thought process to, to my role and to my time that I've been spent on, on a Lewis Central school board is you, you listen and understand and try to, you know, not to be divisive in your understanding and your questioning, but make sure that you just are aware of what the needs that need to be heard are.
Thank you, Robert. And Jennifer, same question to you. How do you handle those divisive, politically charged issues and some of the tensions that can rise from that? And what experience do you have that has helped you in that regard?
I think from a board perspective, we do have procedures in place. There are two times that the public can speak at our board meetings. We at Lewis Central have been lucky. Our board meetings have been very civil and people have spoken who have wanted to. We also implemented during the pandemic when we had to go online for our meetings for a while, letting people post to our online chats. And we've continued that option for people who are watching to post something in the chat. And they can have that discussed during our meetings. So I think that gives a forum to people. If they want to come and speak, they are more than welcome to. I also, like Bob said, to be able to go back and to communicate to our community why the board made certain decisions and to have those one-on-one conversations and to be able to explain those decisions helps, I hope it helps people's understanding of what's happening, but just to be responsive to people when they do ask questions of why the boards makes the decisions they do.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Doreen, we wrap this question up with you. For LC at least.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's been difficult because recently things have been so passionate. Most of the time, people really don't pay attention to the school board meetings and, and things going on because things are going good and they're busy doing other things. The one thing is, is listening. We hire a superintendent. Dr. Canost has been wonderful at his communication and he has reached out trying to explain. And I think the, the thing that people don't understand is that just because the school district isn't changing to your view, doesn't mean that you're not heard. I think people don't understand at those two times during our agenda, people can address the board, but it's not a back and forth debate, going back and forth and, and discussing it. It's that we listen and the school board does listen. But sometimes I, we try to find the middle of the road and we try to let them understand that sometimes their, their way of thinking isn't going to be the decision for the school district.
Thanks, Doreen. And we'll jump up to Lauren to start for CB schools on this, but how would you envision yourself handling, you know, tense, politically charged issues at school board meetings that may come up? And then what experience do you have maybe sitting on other boards or things along those lines? And where something like that could have occurred?
Yes. So there are definitely things I can do as a board member, but as a board, there are things we can do as well. As has been mentioned, there's procedures and decorum that school boards follow to making people aware of that and understanding it is super important. And if it isn't being adhered, what could happen? I think there are some solutions, creative ones that we can do that we don't already have. Things as simple as, I know we've had recesses before, but maybe bringing in a mediator, you know, if something's coming up. It could also be having an opportunity for people to communicate on our virtual platform. I don't know if there's a way to do that on YouTube, but a lot of parents aren't able to get down to meetings and that would be a great opportunity to hear from them and discuss it. But as a board member, all of this stuff is passionate. It's hard decisions. That has been mentioned and emotions are going to be involved. And remembering that, you know, taking a deep breath is super important. And some experiences I've had in my life is my everyday life. I've worked in victim services. So you can imagine tensions are high. I work in crisis all the time, so I'm familiar with de-escalation and being there for people and making sure they're listened and heard and that they're reminded their voice is being heard, even if it's, you know, maybe not a decision they're happy with, but it's what's best for the district and the community.
Thank you, Lauren. And Pat, same question to you. How would you go about handling potentially divisive, tense issues that may be brought before the board of directors? And what experience do you have that could help you in that regard?
Yeah, so I, kind of picking a little bit from, from Bob's answer, I, I think it's, it's very important to, to listen and to be able to especially understand, you know, whatever issue, whether it's a hot-button issue or not, you know, whoever's presenting it, trying to understand from their perspective. You know, why they have the sort of, you know, opinion they have and, you know, and what I can do to, to best help in the situation. So listening is, is especially important. And also actually what Jennifer had mentioned as well, as far as being able to fully explain why not only the board came to the decision they did, but why I myself came to the decision I did is, is extremely important. That kind of touches on what I've been talking through, through this meeting of listening and communicating as best I can. As, as far as, as far as my experience, I, a bit of a background that I specialize in is cybersecurity education and unfortunately, a large part of that is taking topics that are very complex and, you know, higher level and, and trying to explain them to someone who maybe doesn't have as much experience in that. That's something that I tend to spend a, a lot of time in. And so I'm hoping I can use some of the skills that I picked up with that and trying to boil down some of these hot-button issues to things that concern the board and do the best I can.
Thank you. And Jared, we'll close with you. How would you go about handling tense and potentially divisive issues that would be brought between, before the board? And what experience do you have that could help you address that or handle that if, if and when it comes up?
As, as always, staying calm, humble and listening to understand is important. Too many people often listen simply to reply or respond rather than understand. And, and people that are talking want to be want to be understood. They don't want to just be heard. They, they want to know that a resolution is going to come out of what they have to say or some kind of answer or explanation. When Chris LaFerla preloaded the response debate with why the school chose the, the mask mandate, that, that was probably the, the best thing he could have done. I don't know if it really helped because people weren't there to listen. They were there to express their opinion regardless of what the actual explanation was, but, but giving the public and the teachers, the staff, that everybody that's involved, an explanation why the decision was made definitely is, is a hundred percent what we need to do. As far as experience, again, I'm in insurance. I deal with angry people and attorneys all day long. I've been in arbitrations. I've been in mediations, trials. I've personally been deposed for twenty-three hours by a very nasty attorney. So I understand a hundred percent how to stay calm and how to be there to, to listen to what they have to say, be respectful, but be able to provide a concise answer back when, when faced with someone that's adverse.
Thanks, Jared. And kudos to you, twenty-three hours. That is quite a long time. So that is impressive. So kudos to you. What we want to do now is we're getting close to the one-thirty timeframe is we want to give you each up to a minute to provide some closing remarks. Well, we started with CB, so we'll close with LC on this front and we'll start with you, Robert.
I like to say that, you know, I'm running for, for Lewis Central School Board because of my passion for the Lewis Central District and my passion for education. Yeah. The things that are going well don't go well just because there isn't somebody there pushing them. You know, Lewis Central is recognized as a blue ribbon high school. Now, that's something that happens because the Board of Education, the staff, the administration and the students are engaged and are trying to make things better. You know, those are the things that we sort of look past and we, we don't realize, but those are the impacts that you make by serving on the Board of Education for, for a district. You know, and that's the reason I, I chose to run here. That's the reason I option, opted to serve on IASB so I could continue to, to make education Iowa a, a better thing for, for the state. And I hope that I can have support on November second.
Thank you, Robert. And Jen, that brings us to you for your up to a minute and closing, closing comments.
Thank you, Drew, for hosting this. And thank you, chamber members, for your attendance and for listening to all of us speak. I I do feel like it's an important election. It's one where we actually have a, a choice that hasn't always been the case. So it's great to see the interest out there in our school. I am running again because I truly want to support our students, our families. And also our support staff, our teachers, our administration. That is why I have chose to run again for school board. I think it's important for Lewis Central with the choosing of a new superintendent. I hope we can choose someone as great as Dr. Canost was these past three years. And I would like to see the excellence that we are growing at Lewis Central continue on with this election. So yes, vote November second. I hope you can support me and thank you again for the opportunity, Drew.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Doreen, we will close on you for your one minute of closing remarks for LC.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I have experience on the board. I wanted to run again just because there are still things, the construction projects, the other things that we can do at Lewis Central. I don't feel that we need to settle on being a good school district. We always need to prove, we always need to do things better or more. And I think with, just with my experience that with coming up with a new selecting a new superintendent, I think that that's the, that's the number one thing a school board does. And with my experience, I think that I can still help Lewis Central in moving forward and, and that's basically why I wanted to run for reelection is because I am passionate about Lewis Central, got a lot of years in there and I want to keep, keep going forward.
Thank you, Doreen. And thank you, Robert and Jen, as well as you guys joined us for this hour and a half session on behalf of Lewis Central School District. So moving into the Council of Love School District candidates, Lauren, we'll start with you for your up to one minute and closing remarks.
So the biggest thing is my life has definitely been shaped and impacted by Council of Love's Community School District, but also my family as well. I've had family members that are alumni that have worked for the district and have gotten a great experience and their life has been changed because of it. And I want to ensure that still continues. And people know we have great schools and it's a great workplace to be at. You know, there's bumps along the road when isn't there, you know, and being a part of that to help overcome that, but also continue the successful things that are happening. And also bring in new ideas too. That's something I want to do. And also why, you know, like I said, I'm running just to just make sure everybody gets what they, you know, have. Just being a part of the district, we all have a relationship to it and you know, I want what's best for everyone and that's something I can do as a board member and you know, definitely vote November second. Local elections are very important and I definitely hope I have your support.
You're muted, famous line. So Pat, we'll go to you for your closing remarks.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll try to be brief. I can tend to sometimes ramble. So I, I, I hope that some of the, the points that I, that I made of, of trying to, to be an active listener, try to communicate effectively, both with the administration and with the rest of the district resonates with, with some of you. As I mentioned earlier, the reason I got into this, I, I, both me and my family, we've had such a positive experience in this district. I, I have no idea where I would be if I was in a different district. I probably wouldn't be in front of you all speaking, that's for sure. But I, I just want to ensure that, that not only my kids who start, you know, soon, but the, the rest of the kids in our community have a positive experience and I, I hope that if elected to school board, I can, I can do that. So be sure to definitely go out November second and vote. I think time and time again over the past few weeks, you've been, you know, seeing why it's especially important that local elections get their due and that everyone goes out and vote. So I hope I have your support, but make sure to vote November second.
Thank you, Pat. And Jared, we'll let you land the plane with your closing remarks.
Oh, I hope not to this point then. Well, I'm running to give back to my community. I, I've been volunteering more and more as time goes on. And this is an opportunity for me to give back even more to something that's so close to me, my children. As with my style of servant leadership, I want to support the public and the staff and ensure everyone not only has a voice, but they have what they need to succeed. Making important decisions requires an understanding and a, and a willingness to learn. I want to ensure the school continues to be one of the best in the bluffs as it was this year. And that if there are any shortcomings, those are addressed and, and we have the opportunity to give the children the highest level of education possible.